Make the right decisions for the Alpona County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
Here.
Johnson.
Eric.
Bremen.
Here.
Reggie is accused. And Small.
Good.
Hey, uh, do we have a motion to approve in minutes or some?
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. I guess, is there any additions, deletions? I guess I should. Is it amended? Most careful.
Now, I'm aware.
Okay. Uh, public comment, three minutes per person, please identify yourself. There, there's no one on line. So you make it. My theory. Presentations. We have no presentations. Unfinished business. This might be a record, I don't know. We have none. New business. I just saw the motion to approve preauthorized claims and open claims presented for payment between October first, two thousand twenty-five, and October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, for check number one five eight nine six zero to one five nine one zero six, and E checks two seven four zero to two seven five zero, for a grand total of one million four hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Support. It is motion supported and discussion. So we'll call.
Ma.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Bremen.
Yes.
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 Okay, and last, operating engineer engineers tentative agreement. So you had copy in your package, we should have all got the copy of the tentative agreement that we went over in both session, last meeting, uh, the union of the group has ratified, they have, or well, I should say they have voted in affirmative about the contract and it's now up to us to do the same and then you would give anything, we'll give that back to them, get it ratified and be done with it. With that, I make a motion that we ratify the agreement with the operating engineers local three twenty-four, I believe in affirmative.
Secondly.
Um, any discussions?
Eagle County. Yeah. You go to jump in insurance in twenty-one. And then it not really a major, but it's just some harder to get to fifteen-five in from ten thirty to get to fifteen-five in about later nine years, just seems like a holy top.
Well.
Now I realize there doesn't know I want to talk.
Yeah, look, I heard a smooth jump since eighteen, what our insurance is. That, that rate is still, so that's an aggregate of all family singles and, and families.
Yeah.
And it is still, still below what we're paying for the rest of the building.
And still very good insurance, so I actually.
Yeah.
Other than and cover a lot of auto accidents.
Really?
No, don't you remember about three or four years ago, we went through that?
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, because we, we got a note that have your, have your unions check their
Because they don't cover auto.
Or have, have your insurance companies checking to make sure your insurance companies are covering.
Yep.
And there's dozen.
Wow.
It, and, and we went to them and said as a group and said, you're not covered if you have an automobile accident.
Yeah.
Well, we'll take our risks.
Well, you keep it on your auto insurance then. So you if your own, if your personal insurance or your employee insurance will cover auto accidents, you can drop it off your car insurance and get a better premium. If you don't get it, keep it on your car insurance. Well, good. Okay, I'm good, is one of our calls?
Yes.
Yes.
Bremen.
Yes.
Ma.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Thanks.
Hey, finance report, um, we had a finance meeting this morning. Uh, I think, uh, we're looking, I actually should, uh, she was gonna look into, we have to have a closeout meeting for ERPA. This year has to be done, we're gonna look into that. Getting that done, um, we moved money around, she was found some money uh, that we can move around to get, uh, the sheriff is going to.
Thirty thousand dollar grant, yeah.
For a grant, which we will be reimbursed for.
Mm-hmm.
And then we are looking into this M N P, what we're gonna do. Um, Terry's gonna talk with them tomorrow on this, but obviously we need to get this.
What's the shift around with the money, huh? To get a grant? No, 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 I didn't get a grant.
No, so they're.
Scott was, um, granted thirty thousand dollar grant and all we have to put it into his budget because he has expended out.
Yeah.
And then it's a reimbursement, so we were able, I was gonna bring to the board today that we're gonna have to change the bottom line, but since there's been some reevaluating and some calculations, there was money within, so we can do it that way and not change the bottom line.
And we, we went over, uh, the M N P, we're gonna, what do we? What was it? Sixteen? Sixteen, what do we have to bet this year? Twenty-four thousand three hundred. Well, and then we have the next three months. So we need twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars budget for this year, so we're working on that right now.
And that stuff that we get returned to us.
That, yes.
Reimbursement.
That, that's where we're working on trying to find out.
How is it, it's kind of the process of all getting it done.
Yes.
The state has changed the rules during this whole process, but then you're hopefully, actually I can, or if anybody else can figure this thing out where we can get this thing going. This is.
Yeah, you definitely have to have someone manage that.
And that seems to be the big question, like.
Isn't.
So once it gets rolling, I thought that was what we hired these people to do. Well, their, yeah, their, their big job is more to do the plan for the three-year period. Put together a plan that the Eagle will accept as our recycling, our management. This grant administrator you were talking about means, because the money's still coming to us and somebody's gotta send it to them.
Well, we will have to send it to Alpina.
Right.
Right. And then it will be reimbursed.
Right.
It's not a grant, it's a reimbursement now, started out as a grant. Where we can get seventy thousand for, for three years, the first year was gonna go towards the whole planning and the second and third year, we would.
You were talking about a grant administrator though, who, what do they, why do they have to be involved? They don't have a grant anymore.
Whoever's gonna manage this.
Yeah.
Through the state. So, so I have, we, we're, so we work directly with Eagle.
Right, but you're saying there is no more grant?
It's not a grant, it's a reimbursement, it's from the state.
Oh, well, they want us to have a grant administrator.
Yeah.
That's for.
Apparently, that's what they're saying.
Grant or reimbursement.
For the reimbursement, it's not, it is not, not a grant.
Well, you go to the meeting you did, so you'll find out.
Yeah, I'm gonna find out tomorrow at all. It, it is.
Does sound like a pass through from us, Alpina.
It is, I mean, that whether we're going to, we're getting a bill from Alpina for her. We have, yes. Okay, so we're getting a bill from Alpina. Are we going to then send the lead to Alpina? Yes. Alpina then sends it to Eagle? No.
We're sending the bill back to the state and get our reimbursement, also Alpina.
Well, that's what we need to figure out.
Well, in the language, if you look at what Stephanie just provided for you, maybe on page three, section D. It does state.
Have the same thing as you.
Oh, we don't.
I, no, I, I don't know, she, she was printing them, I don't know, I had it right here.
Well.
There's.
I can.
Very sorry.
Do you guys have this?
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
Oh, maybe.
It was just with the packet that Stephanie gave us.
Got it.
Oh, in the back, section D, it does state state and grant funding received by the party under M C I. It does state that it's a state and grant funding received by the party under M C L three two four. So to me, it sounds like this is a grant, it's a reimbursement grant, we're getting money from the state, we have to spend it out and then we get reimbursed for it. So they need somebody to be the administrator of this so that for the receivable of it and the payable of it and just managing it in general.
I guess I always, when we went to Alpina and became part of this, I had to tell me. I guess my understanding was more that Alpina was our own handle that worked.
That's what I thought at the last, when they were here.
We will invoice each participating county month.
So we're sending the money to Alpina.
Yes.
And then Alpina should be telling Eagle that we gave them money.
We give reimbursement.
Then Eagle will send us the money.
That's what I originally had thought, but from the conversation that Stephanie has had with.
Just had.
Um, that was.
That's not what I had.
That's not what the chief of Stephanie.
County is then after having paid, and I haven't seen this word yet, then Alpina will have to pay that stuff for reimbursement, which is a far different pie than
signed up.
I think we just need to definitely get some clarity on it before I mean, obviously, we're the last county they're waiting on to get this, um, figured out, but.
So you, you have a meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
With an M P and irons?
Yes.
So. Twist some iron.
They will try to, I will try to get us all answers, believe me, I like the answers too. I mean, I'm very, this is.
Awesome.
Low. Yeah, I mean, I'll.
We're gonna sell and we spend.
We already got a bill.
Yeah, we have.
Their bill.
It's.
But then you have to send the bill to the.
Yeah, so each county will have a grant administrator that will oversee this grant and deal directly with the receivables or reimbursements and the, the grant application itself and all the process for the next however long this goes on, five years. So each county will have their own individual. So Alpina's was the master plan, they put all of this together and everything and now all payments will be made payable to them.
And they're gonna send the invoice to our grant person and that grant person's gonna send it back to them?
To you.
The Eagle.
But they said, the way that they, she explained it is that we might only deal with them once a year.
Yeah.
So that's why I didn't understand, I didn't know if I was understanding her or if she was explaining it correctly, if it'll be it sounds like, well, I would just, you guys, if it would be a reimbursement.
So they need a grant administrator, but it's to get this thing going.
For our, for our, like, weeks ago.
So I'm just gonna, I'm not, or I, I recommend that Terry Small is our grant administrator. And you're sure you're using good judgment?
It doesn't have to stay that way, but we gotta have names.
Thank you.
I don't support that.
Because then that email that they need to submit to Eagle has to come on what should be your letterhead and accepting it, so they can accept our plan to even get the, the ball rolling for all the rest of the counties that have been held up to hit through it to on the legal side of it, so that they can serve processing this in their system to start allowing for, hey, we've already paid us a lot of money, now we need to be reimbursed this and I, I didn't quite understand what she meant by that, so I can't explain it very good.
I was gonna say, didn't we, uh, last meeting, but a couple meetings ago, Neil gave the letter, Adam signed it, and that was supposed to go to them, that wasn't that supposed to?
That was not a checkmark, no.
That was it?
Yep, that was not enough, there's, there was more, now it's gotta be a verbal in an email. And.
Saying the grant manager.
And stating who the grant manager is and their email. Because you'll be receiving Eagle communications via email now.
Not on this next page, you're ready?
Well.
You gotta vote out, you gotta.
Why is that?
Hell. We're all part of other organizations through assignment or saying to Adam, I'd like to have this assignment. And all the things that go with it as a member of that committee, and that's something that goes with. I'm sorry, but it does.
I'm sorry, I don't want it. How's that, how's that?
Your obligation to help all the county people to do it.
Then my obligation can go real quick, but that's hard to do.
You'll be on.
What we'll do is start with and then we'll hopefully.
I think it's gonna be pretty clean because Alpina's just gonna end, but they're gonna do all. Right here, look at this, this is what it.
I, 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 I hear what has happened so far.
Okay.
So the fluctuation of this situation is, I'm
Yeah.
So it's coming to light and more and more.
It's just like MOO, it's no different than the MOO grant, I, or any of the other grants that go through.
All in favor of Terry being our grant administrator?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm just saving.
Vote your best. Well, we'll look into this tomorrow, you're gonna get a lot of information for us.
But you know with Eagle as a consultant, they're making almost four hundred thousand dollars off of the platform.
You mean the Alpina company? R R S.
Eagle.
Eagle is the one that's.
They're giving them.
Giving them, it's being, it's being given through.
R R S is taking the money.
And the Alpina, or they, from the start, they said R R S, uh, you were supposed to get seventy thousand a year, three years.
Right.
Each, the first year, seventy thousand was gonna go to the planning and everything else. The second and third year was gonna go to what we wanted to use it towards recycling. That's, that's how it originally started.
Right.
So I think this is the same thing, now we just have to do what we're doing and then get reimbursed after we spent the money.
Well, it sounds like.
It, it, we'll, we'll figure out.
Would it be the same payment probably every month?
It is twenty-five to eighty, so it's gonna be a so.
All right, you don't get the money, it's on you.
I feel ready. Um, I feel so very vulnerable.
Personnel? Personnel, um, yeah, we started today, initial talks, getting ready for, uh, people else's, the police unions that are coming up in a couple of weeks. So productive, very good, we thank Greenhouse for coming and then Faco and the new sheriff and Harry and myself, um, thank you for ratifying the brave engineers with EMS, that was, that was good to do that. Um, other than that, there really isn't any other, any other thing to do that.
That's been treasures report.
I don't have a whole lot to report either, um, except for we met, I met with finance today and we are cleaning up the twenty-five, um, budgets and, um, working on the twenty-six budgets, working with, uh, the clerk's office and finance and we'll be getting those um, budget worksheets out next week, uh, to all the departments. Um.
We had said it originally, we wanted it Friday, but it's not.
Yeah, Friday is not gonna happen there, yeah, there's been some little hiccups that we're working on, but, um, overall it's gonna work out great and, uh, we'll get everything out and I think in three weeks, we will meet with department heads to go over their budgets and then we'll have a workshop with the board and then we'll try to get everything uploaded by, I believe, November twenty-ninth, so for finance, um. The only other thing is, is I did pass out, pass out a cash summary uh, report in regards to all the funds, um, German fund is finally in the positive, that looks good, um. Townships are, are, are really, uh, uh, paying out on their collections, so that is definitely helping and you can just see all the other funds and pretty much all of them are in the positive, we have one that's in the negative that I need to look at the, or we have early in fund. But other than that, everything else is looking good.
Either, did you hear anything on the revenue sharing? I didn't look anymore.
I haven't.
On what our percentages on the new budget.
None has been provided, um.
I have a MAC meeting Monday.
Okay.
So Dean of Oz was from MAC, probably update on what.
Do you want their new revenue sharing to be?
Yep.
And they have a number for us, but I don't think the number that's online is gonna be the numbers that we're supposed to be hearing.
Well, that's how it works, just like the county road commissions are supposedly the winners of this new budget, but I talked to someone and they said, well, yeah, we're giving us here and then they take it down there, so it's not really as good as what they thought, but yeah.
If I hear something, I'll definitely let.
Bye, thank you. Search report.
Um, so our, like, uh, she looks at our office has been working on assisting in budgeting for twenty twenty-six. Um, we have been in conversation with Aperture on our health insurance rates for twenty twenty-six and we would like to schedule if possible, um, a workshop for that, so that she can come and go over the health insurance rate, the different options. Um, I just think it would be better for, uh, that to happen when she comes virtually. She doesn't get the, the chance to answer a lot of questions, I don't think people are open enough to, to ask some of the questions that need to be asked. So, um, if that's possible, she can come in person on November fourth, that is the day before a meeting. Um, I don't know if the board can schedule that into their lives. A workshop for November fourth, you could think about that and let me know.
Are we doing that with the department heads too?
Anybody can come into workshop, so anybody can come, we can set it, set it up as a workshop so that everybody knows, so that it's happening um, to, to come and go over the rates and different options we can do for health insurance. Um. We also need the board to schedule the final, the final workshop for the employee handbook. So if you have a nine some, um, a day that we can do that, I know that we don't have a ton of stuff to go over on that, so even if we wanted to set it up for the same day, we could probably, you know, knock out two birds with one stone there, um, just to go over the little amount in the.
We don't need Aperture here for that though, so we could do that.
But she, she's aware, Aperture is handling our handbook, so she's aware of all the things, but if we wanted to do the health insurance first and then hit on the the workshop for the handbook after, that would be fine, you can head out. Um, she's not the person that really handles our.
So what I'm getting at, we could do the handbook Wednesday, the fifth.
Oh, yeah.
Like after.
After. Okay.
I think.
We can do that.
That would probably work better for.
November fifth? For the handbook, okay, well.
What time were you for on the board?
Anytime.
She's, she's open to morning, afternoon?
She's open, she's open for that day.
Five in top, in top lot, and I go one o'clock here.
And she's doing it virtually?
No, she would come in person that day, she can't come in person on the fifth.
Yeah, well, there, there.
And we have a meeting anyway, so it would be difficult to handle it all in one day.
Afternoon, we can, oh, I, like, it's a three, two or three?
Two?
Um, two or three, let me get back with.
She's serving. Okay.
With, and see what works with Adam.
Okay. All right, and then I will let her know when you let me know, and then, um, Medicare Part D notices went out in the mail today, some of them were handed to employees just to save a little bit on postage, but if you didn't get one today, it's in the mail. And that's all I really need to report on today.
Hey, thank you. Sheriff's report. Eve?
Oh, you guys get me today since Sheriff's and Land use, so uh, just a few things, um, yeah, thank you for making that budget adjustment and stuff, I kinda came in a little bit late, but um, so he said that I got done, so, um, that actually puts us um, quite a bit further along than what the sheriff and I actually thought we were gonna be on this project, it's basically mandated by the federal government, federal city government, uh, that we have these new radios that are encrypted. So it was, uh, something that we, um, got dealt with last, that got handed to us last year when we had our, um, our lean audit and we were told that this needed to be done. And luckily, we've been able to, you know, the home, homeland security grants, uh, we've been able to get that paid for, you know, this year and next year, it's basically a two-year project. Uh, the good thing is it's a hundred percent reimbursement, so it's not really a cost, which, if, if you priced out the cost of a uh, eight hundred megahertz radio, they're running about six thousand dollars. You just, you know, it's totally, that's very expensive. Um, but yeah, a hundred percent reimbursement in that, um. The sheriff and I are getting ready to go to the Michigan Sheriff's Association conference, uh, that starts on Sunday. Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, uh, the big thing with this year is the sheriff is gonna be inducted as the president of the Michigan Sheriff's Association, which is, I think, a pretty big deal for Alpona County. Um, what it's gonna do is it's gonna give him, um, some opportunities to travel, you know, uh, I think there's three different national conferences that they have uh, throughout the year, so he's gonna be able to go to those, um, meet other sheriffs from around the country, um, share ideas and, and plus it gives us a lot of, um, like I said, a lot of recognition that, that normally a county like ours probably wouldn't get. Um, I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling pretty proud of them, I'm, I'm, I'm glad they're all around. Um, so, you know, this, like I said, he's been on that board for, for a while now, so, um, but, and the term runs one year, so, so you probably see me a little bit more at these meetings this year.
Well, that'd be good.
Yes, but yeah, especially, yeah, that, uh, big deal, I'm, I'm, I'm excited, I I think this is just absolutely awesome, I can't wait, um, but anyhow, um, that and then, um, training this year, uh, so far, uh, the deputies have done four hundred, five hundred and forty-eight hours of, of additional training um, that we institute, you know, throughout the years, programs that we have, whether it be, uh, online or in person, um.
We just did one out at Department City Fire Hall where we renewed everybody's, uh, first aid and CPR. Uh, we did that, that was a good training, I think the sheriff mentioned to you, um, the training before that we had, um, had this guy's a national speaker, uh, come in and talked about, um, trauma issues and, and, you know, family issues and things like that, there was a lot of time to see first responders, so, um. But yeah, that, that was really good treatment as well. Um, and then as you're all aware, um, the state budget finally got passed. Um, there were some things that M S A, uh, Michigan Sheriff's Association pushed, uh, for in that budget, I was just gonna kind of touch on those, um. There was three hundred and twenty million, uh, in school safety and mental health grants, um, and that also applies to, uh, school resource officers. Um, and that also applies to, uh, school resource officers funding, so that was in there. Uh, the Michigan, M S A again pushed for that really hard, um.
Excuse me, Keith?
Yeah.
Who's getting that funding? Will that come to your department, or is that?
I'm gonna tell you how that breaks down, yeah, um, because there was two things, there was that. And then also this year, they did, um, M S A pushed for this public safety, it was called a Public Safety Violence Prevention Fund. And I don't know if the sheriff has talked to you about that, it was still in legislation, you're kind of got hung up and sunned a little bit. Um, but what that's gonna do is it's also, um, that, that's gonna seventy million dollars for that was allocated. Uh, fifty million goes to cities, villages, townships, and counties. The counties basically got eleven point seven five million out of that, um, and the way they're gonna face it is, um, by your inverse taxable value, which is what they do when you help how you get your money, okay? Um, so basically, how you do your taxes now, just go backwards, and then that's how you're, what you're gonna get for funding. Um, I read up a little bit on it before I came over, um. I, we will know more after the M S A conference of how this is gonna get worked out. Um, but initially, I will tell you that they weren't looking to give any money to counties. That it was gonna go to larger cities and that was it, um, but because of M S A push and push and push, um, we're able to kind of get that spread out a little bit, a little bit more. Um, and again, we'll know more, um, after we get back from the conference, on how that's gonna get worked out, but, um. Cause certain, it's, it's gotta be allocated a certain way, okay? And the way they had that broken down, seventy four, seventy four percent of the grant has to be spent on direct law enforcement activities, and twenty five percent uh, can be spent on, uh, supporting law enforcement activities. So we need to get, after our conference, we should have a clear definition of what that means. Um, but basically, it will be money that's allocated out to the counties, we're gonna have to ask for it. Um, and, and then we're gonna have restrictions on how we, how we spend that. Okay, so we can't just like dump it in the general fund, it's, it's gotta be used a certain way. Um, and then also with that, um, there was, um, ten million dollars against society in, uh, public safety academy grants, the Vincles, they've been doing this. I think last year was the first year, and what that does, it allows us one of the problems that we have is people need to go to the academy in order to be a law enforcement officer, and you have to get a certification, you have to have a license, so. In order to do that, they have to go through the academy. Well, before, the cost was either, um, paid by the student, or it was paid by the municipality or the county, um. Through this grant, um, that they, that they started last year, we're able to dip into that and, and draw that money, um, to pay for the academy, to pay for some lodging, travel, stuff like that. We haven't used it yet, um, and the reason why is because the sheriff and I are very particular about who we get and who we use these funds for, because it's, they're very limited, so. Um, if we get somebody, we're gonna make sure it's the right person and we're gonna send it again. Uh, but we are glad to see that again, uh, in the state budget. And, that's it. That's all I got.
Good question.
It's great, I mean, it's great that maybe we're gonna get a little recognition in the rural areas now.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely, so, um, I, I think it's a big deal, um, it, it's it's gonna give us, like I said, some, um, exposure in areas that we never had before, so. Uh, plus he's, you know, he's been president of the M S A, so he, he's gonna be able to direct some things a different way. And get some more attention in the local media, so.
All right, thank you. Many reports. Carolyn? Does you switch sides? Because you switched sides.
Um, the only thing really does is, Clint had their quarterly meeting this past Friday, Friday. Um, our December twelfth meeting, we will be finalizing the budget for twenty five. And, um, comparing, approving the budget that we'll have for twenty twenty six. The rest, uh, things, progress is being made down at the, uh, Harbor Town. And I, I've said it before, and I will repeat because it's worth repeating in my eyes, that it's thanks to Dave that we're getting the repair work done, that we are, um, some of the, he's initial, the one that's taking care of the outside. Um, Dave Hanson spent a lot of time there. Taking care of getting things ready for the two new doors down in Lake Ness Department, um. We're getting improvement done that we have tried to get done over the years, and we couldn't get anybody to do them. Um, half the people said, oh, that job's much too small for me, and the other half said, oh, that's too big a job for me, I can't do all of that, and so, finally, we're getting it done, they've finally got it, so, thank you, David.
Just been attending meetings, and, uh, that's about all.
I have Oklahoma Township and Carolina Township. Last night, that's pretty much, there's going along, nothing big report. Harvesting beans.
I have been part.
Um, you have communications, you can look through it at your leisure, um. I see this one, are, are you, anyone going with us on this next Monday?
We're talking about.
Yeah.
I might go, but I.
Well, I see R S B P was, you know, supposed to be today. Have a. And I, I've seen something that Adams had that had to be R S B P by.
Of the canvas range.
Well, you know Adams.
Well, it's a different one though, this, this is a difference that they're on here.
It is?
I think so, cause this is marijuana off the ocean oversight, and another one is.
Yeah, this is staying out, cause it's like simple, this move, I, I saw both, sorry. And, and I, we get very.
We get two hundred dollars, and the rest goes to, um, the health department. They're the ones that.
Katie Spalding was in charge of that.
And the health department ordered.
I don't know, I, I guess that's something.
That's a factor on what we do, I, I think.
And they're doing programs with.
Although I'm sure it's something Terry would also get involved in.
Yeah, I don't know, I think Terry.
You're a mean little lady, you know that. It's a mean little lady.
Let's talk to, let's talk to D H D and see if they want it again, if it's not worth our effort, then. But I know they were using flat, they reported on it last year.
I think it was last year.
Yeah, but they did stuff with it, and their lock boxes and a couple other things they were.
But, but it's, it's a lot of work for us, for two hundred dollars.
I didn't think it was a lot, I think everybody just forgot, forgot to do it.
They actually do the application.
Yeah.
And we sign it, Adam signs it, but they have to put their budget on there and everything, and they submit all the reporting to this date. And then the reimbursement comes to us, the only thing we do, Trina does help invoice out the, um, two hundred dollars, so we get our two hundred dollars. But to be honest with you, there's not a whole lot we do.
I think the biggest part was always trying to get ahold of somebody over there. Send us the stuff so we can send it in with the.
Because of the employee turnover, I think.
Katie last year wanted it, and then all of a sudden she left, and it was kind of.
Well, we can make a decision on the first, maybe in November.
We'll have a D H D meeting.
Well, there's a deadline on the grant though.
November tenth.
Yeah, that's for the application, so I mean, if somebody could reach out to them.
But Monday after next, we have that. So, um, public comment. Missioners additional comments and concerns. Well, that, I guess we will adjourn until, won't they, November fifth?